Glad you take home. Send me email. I got words. It was my Gmail.
Good afternoon. If those of you out in the auditorium would please be seated, it's one o'clock and we are ready to get started with today's briefing for January 26, 2020. Is there anyone? Let's see, everybody's here except Ms. Givinelli, are you on the phone? Is she? Does anybody know? Is she?
She had the number to call.
She had the number to call in. Okay, well, just alert me when she's on the phone, please. So I said, welcome, and we are starting today's briefing meeting with quarterly reports from our school board advisory committees. The first one will be Construction Advisory Committee. Is there the construction chair or his or her designee? Okay. Step up to the, in each of you, because I don't have a list with names, just introduce yourself and your position.
Oh, I got it.
Ah, yeah, you get a.
I mean, I saw the paper case, so I assumed it was.
You get to be up front.
I like this one better if I can put my iPad down.
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Fisher. I appreciate it. Everyone's time and attention here, and thanks for coming this afternoon.
It's Vaughn, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking. The masks make it really hard to tell who is actually talking.
I know, it's, you need your mouth and nose.
I can't see anyone's lips moving, so I kind of assume who's talking.
No problem whatsoever. Welcome. We're looking forward to hearing your report.
Thank you for that. Starting off, since, I want to apologize for missing our last board briefing. I honestly just didn't have it in my calendar. I could have been here had I known. Simple oversight, and I'm sorry for that. Starting off with our meeting agenda, November was canceled due to that stool activity that we had. There was a NATO warning, everyone kind of shut down early. So we moved our December meeting to December, which turned it into a little bit more of a voluntary meeting, not mandatory, because it wasn't actually published in the schedule. But we went ahead with it as, since we had that open date. So December's meeting was a tour of Fort Myers Technical College. It was very informative, and Mr. Rozell and Mrs. Clark led us around the school. We went through all their programs. Some really good back and forth with some of our members and the faculty and staff at Fort Myers Technical College about the programs going on there. And the takeaway from that was, most of our committee members were really impressed with what the school was doing, but they were also amazingly surprised that they didn't really know it was there to begin with. So it kind of led us down the path of what can we do to better advertise, to put out there what good things that are being done at Fort Myers Technical College. And we were under the realization that you don't really have an advertising budget, per se, as a public school district. So, you know, are there opportunities for the business community to help in that regard? Some of that, there is a public face, especially with cosmetology and hair care, where you do invite the general public in as customers, but is there an opportunity to grow that beyond that market segment into the automotive, into the culinary arts industries? Can we start catering things out of there? Something to get your name out, their name out there, that, this is a viable option, and there's some great programs in that facility. So that was the primary point of our December meeting. And then, when we came back in January, we kind of recapped some of that and, you know, kind of started brainstorming about how to work on that public perception and the advertising aspect of it. Some ideas are flowing out there. There's trade shows with like the BIA or the Building Industry Association. There's property management associations have events, but trying to get the, so just getting the table, getting the name out there a little bit more. We'll go a lot further to helping the business community, because a lot of the things our committee members have been asking for aren't available. They just don't really know it and don't really know how to go look for it. Sorry, it's been a long day already. So, and the remainder of our January meeting was really trying to come up with an agenda for the rest of the year. We had a little bit of a break, and we're kind of trying to outline what steps we go further. And there was, and we don't want to rehash the procurement process too much, but we had a few members concerned that some of their suggestions, voicing some of their opinions, weren't completely taken into account or properly addressed as to why they were not taking it into account. So we're going to do a little bit more research into that and maybe come forward with an actual item of, list of what we think could be improved upon at the procurement process. Now, keep in mind that we can't all agree amongst ourselves on every item, so this may not be as simple as it, as it really was intended to be. But that is one of the things we're going to be looking at moving forward. We also had a good discussion on the continuing services contract and how they're being used. Now that, now that the allowable construction cost for the continuing services has been raised from $2 million to $4 million, and then how it's applied when it comes to building studies, feasibility studies, it doesn't necessarily need to disqualify the firm that did the feasibility study object when it comes out. So district staff did a good bit of research in that regard, research being contacting other school districts to see what their processes are. And by and large, for the most part, most firm, most districts in Florida do not exclude feasibility studies or firms that have worked on that project from submitting for the actual project. Now, the way we understand it right now, the county's district policies are like that, so we're probably going to move forward with a recommendation to, to, you know, open that up a little bit. There is some strategic knowledge that's acquired during that process, but if that's published to the, you know, all submitters, then it shouldn't really be a problem moving forward, because the feasibility studies or whatever comes off of that continuing services project would be essentially random in the fact that it's in an ordered list type of situation. So they're not picking a company to do it and then having them come in. It's who's next, have these guys do the study, and we don't exclude them from the larger project, because at the end of the day, who would want to do a little feasibility study knowing it excludes you from the larger project? So, you know, it's kind of opening up a little bit, and we'll make, we'll kind of clarify that most likely at our next briefing. And with that. Any questions?
Yeah, well, and.
Uh-oh, one more from Scott.
And the interlocal agreement discussion.
Uh, thank you, thank you. I did have that here, I just didn't get into the fine print. Our next item on the agenda is the interlocal agreements between the school districts and municipalities or counties. Now, these are all signed roughly 2009, but we've kind of come back into seeing how hamstrung the district is and can they be better negotiated. As the building code, the Florida building code and the state ordinances are written, the school districts have a lot of leeway in that you can tell the county to go pound sand if you think their landscaping ordinances are too strict or their parking requirements are out of hand. You don't necessarily have to listen to them. But when all of these interlocal agreements were written and signed, well, that further hamstrung you. So now you are forced to the requirements of those agreements. So we want to take a good look at that, and they're not sunsetting, they're just kind of out there. So we want to take a good look at that to see if there's a position of renegotiation available to the district to kind of back you out of some of the onerous requirements, and a lot of those are coming through from recent experiences with off-site improvements. You know, you buy a piece of property, you build a school on it, kind of expect water and sewer to be there, but if it's a half mile away, you got to go get it. And then when you're down there, you're going to put in turning lanes. And these are things the county really should be doing through the impact fees and the school taxes that are already established. So there's kind of a haggle there, like, you're not really in the business of building turning lanes, but you're being forced to be. So, you know, that's kind of where this argument is coming from. And thank you for bringing that up, Scott. And did I miss anything else?
You did.
Thank you, sir.
That's excellent and very comprehensive look at what your committee has been doing, and we'll get any questions in a moment, but it sounds like you're going to have some really good recommendations to bring forward before this year is over. Does anyone, okay, first Ms. Patrica and then Ms. Gittens.
Do, thank you, by the way, for being here and for the detailed report. Are traffic lights included? You said we're not in the business of, it's always shocked me that we're in the business of traffic lights. Are those included in those interlocals?
Um, I would have to look more deeply into that. I haven't been experienced where we were, I'm not saying it hasn't happened.
Theoretically, we have a lot of leeway, being a school district in this state. When you enter in an interlocal agreement, it supersedes those statutes for school districts. So right now, any intersection work, off-site, traffic lights, traffic circles, turn lanes, improvements, utility bring-ins up to the property line, we pay that. So you've heard me say I'm not a bridge builder when we talked about that connection of sunrise to the other side of sunrise. Theoretically, we really shouldn't be any of that outside infrastructure builders either, so.
Yeah, and we, not, yeah, not to interrupt, but we do have a 30-minute presentation later on today on the interlocals.
Is staff looking at them now, is the question? And are they being renegotiated as we speak, is the question?
Well, we're working on right now the committee reports. If you can hold your question until Mr. Rickenbacher does his presentation. Ms. Gittens?
Were you finished, Ms. Patrica?
No, I'm good.
At the end of last meeting, the agreements were distributed to our committee, and we'll be kind of reading through them and talking about them at our next meeting.
And just a quick answer, yes, staff is working and reviewing those, and we'll be coming forward with it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gittens?
Thank you, and it sounds, like I said, like you're doing a really great job of helping us to do things better and to find different ways to do it. Just a technicality in your report, when you're talking about Ms. Morgan's report, you say about proximity, the year 2022, '23. I would suggest that you add in there for elementary schools only, just for the posterity of notes, in case someone should look at this in the future. And you were saying that you would come back with the report in the next quarter about the things that you were talking about, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because that was my question, when would you be doing that? And I think that's it. Thank you.
Any other board members have a question on this? Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, because the committee really is eager to dig into things that will make our lives better, more cost efficient, more effective, your lives better. They want to work, and they're really committed to these three things. So I have great expectations with respect to the work they're going to be doing over the next couple of months, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks very much, Ryan and Scott, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Fisher? Yes, so, and thank you for that presentation. With traffic lights and turn lanes, et cetera, being part of the infrastructure in the county, why is it that the district is taking on that cost when we build a school?
There's, there's a few thought methodologies on why this is happening. One is, well, they saw the sales tax amendment get passed, so now you're all rich. And secondly, they, they know their strategy, and they can do this pretty easily, is to procrastinate. Your buses are coming, your school's going to open. They don't really have to respond to emails or show up at meetings or really be all that much participant, until your back's against the wall, or we need this done now, or you could open a school without water. Well, you lost all your bargaining power at that point.
So then there are no rules, laws, or ordinances that govern that as far as the responsibility?
There are to a degree at the state level. Our concern and the problem is that the interlocal agreement has overridden those, and that's what we're going to try to take a look at.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I would like to remind board members that this section of our agenda deals with committee reports, and you had just been excellent, excellent knowledge of all of this, but some of the questions might be more appropriate for staff later on. But thank you. All right, so our next committee report is Continuous Systemic Improvement Advisory Committee. Do we have a representative? Okay, so Ms. McClung, you're the liaison?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you, everyone. Dr. Stork sends her apologies for being unable to be here this afternoon and asked me to provide the report to you. So our November meeting was also postponed due to our lovely weather event, so we held it in December, when we did not have a regular meeting scheduled. At that time, we reviewed the board's legislative priorities. And Mrs. Gittens gave a presentation, explained each of the priorities, and the committee was in agreement that they were the right priorities for our district. However, they were particularly concerned around the accountability priority. So the committee did make a recommendation, or basically a statement of support, so I'll read that to you. The CSI Advisory Committee endorses all of the board's legislative priorities with particular emphasis on the accountability topic, recommending that state mandated standardized tests be administered, but students, teachers, schools, and school districts be held harmless and the tests be used as diagnostic tools. Excuse me. So after that meeting, we did have our January meeting, and it was basically a scaled-down presentation of the presentation that the board received on the workshop on mental health and SEL supports that you just heard this week. So Lori Brooks and Mary Lynn Rodriguez were with us. They gave a very detailed presentation, not quite as detailed as the workshop, but lots of information, and the committee was very impressed with all of the supports that are in place, and had several questions for Lori and Mary Lynn, and they were answered to their satisfaction. Mrs. Gittens reminded the members that she really encourages them to review the agendas before meetings, and any questions that they have, to please forward those to her so that she's able to bring those to the board to get those questions answered. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, February 10, and we will be having a presentation from Adam Malloy related to the elementary proximity plan, so we're really looking forward to that and getting some feedback from our team regarding that plan. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. McClung, and board members. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I'm wondering whether it makes sense to have the Advisory Committee, CSI, reach out to legislators, because it's great that they're supporting our legislative platform, but I would think that with specific regard to this item, it might be impactful for our legislators to know that those community leaders are behind it as well. Is that something we've ever done before? Is it something we can suggest they, as a committee, write, or at least provide them with our legislators' contact information so they on their own can do that?
And I believe we did discuss that.
Wait, could you wait until Ms. Patrica is done, please?
That's my question.
We could certainly take that back to the committee. We did have a little side conversation around that, because the board was getting ready to meet with legislative representatives right after that, our last meeting, and Mr. Ribble, who is the mayor of Estera, had asked about getting all the different communities that were there, the mayors, to have that same message in their statements to the legislators. And I believe three, is that correct, Ms. Gittens? I believe he said that three of them, at our last meeting, he had to give an update on that, and said that three of them were able to arrange their, rearrange their comments to include that. Unfortunately, comments were cut short, were cut to two minutes this year, so some of the mayors didn't have time to include that in theirs.
And I, Ms. Gittens had something to add.
Okay, and I would like to publicly thank Mr. Ribble and the other mayors that were so kind as to add something about our initiatives to their shortened time, so I thank them so much for doing that. And yes, I believe that some of our initiatives that we need to, not just with the advisory boards, but kind of across, somehow communicate to the community that these are things that we need support, and here are the people that you can contact about it. Specifically, here is this, and please let your legislators know. So I believe the advisory boards, at least CSI, is very amenable to doing that type of thing.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Givinelli, have you joined us? Ms. Givinelli? I guess not. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I would just suggest if you all are willing to write something, to have it done sooner than later, because they are in Tallahassee right now. They have begun their hearings, and it would be, I mean, I've already met with them, but it'd be good for them to see other names on that list. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. We could certainly send that information out to our committee with those addresses. Then if they chose to do it individually, they could, and we could talk about doing it as a group at our next meeting.
Anything else, board members?
Is it possible to have that, though, and, I mean, besides our committee individually, but generically, so that we can in our discussions with constituents and people say, you know, go here and you can pick it up, and kind of have more of an overall, spreading it throughout the community to do the same thing?
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
I would caution against a standard letter or email writing campaign with our legislators. I did have a discussion with Ms. Green surrounding the same and asking whether it was appropriate for me to share legislator contact information with members of DAC, and she cautioned against they don't want to be inundated with the same email. It's different if you have a relationship with your legislator and you reach out and you share a personal story and that, but I, those letter writing campaigns, if you look at statistics, are very, very, the likelihood of effectiveness is very, very low. So I would caution against a standard letter writing campaign.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. McClung.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Curriculum Advisory Committee. Do we have a representative? Okay, and if you'll introduce yourself as you step up.
All right, there we go. Sorry. I can adjust it. There we go. Hi, I'm Marissa Byer, and I'm president of Curriculum Advisory, and I'm also a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teacher of advanced reading at Veterans Park. All right, so we met on November 30. Curriculum Advisory Committee welcomed presenters for mental health and social emotional learning. Lori Brooks, as well as presenters from Harns Marsh Elementary, and Calusa Middle, gave an overview of how their schools implement social emotional programs. The presenters discussed with Curriculum Advisory Committee home and community practices, school-wide practices, and individual classroom practices for social emotional learning. The Curriculum Advisory Committee action and next steps is what can the committee do to continue to help with the subject of social emotional learning? Meeting was motioned to adjourn by committee member April White and seconded by committee member Isabel Baroso. We met yesterday as well, and Monday, January 25, and we focused on the proximity plan. Adam Malloy was our main presenter of the evening. He answered questions from the committee members and also encouraged us to look at the new proximity maps, which I am a parent of a child who's going to start kindergarten this coming school year, so that was interesting for me to see as well. And Curriculum Advisory, we also discussed yesterday our textbook adoption processes and the discussions around the new best standards.
Thank you. I'm so impressed with what the jobs the committees are doing, really taking deep dives. That's great. Board members, questions? Any questions? Oh, Ms. Fisher? I don't have a question, but I just want to thank the committee for all of their hard work and for their attention to focusing on details to meet the needs of the kids and provide ultimate academic success. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Okay, next presentation is DAC District Advisory Council. Is anyone here to present? And if you'd please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. My name is Scott Hertz, I'm the chairperson of the District Advisory Committee, and I'm very excited to be here with you today, because we have been challenged over the last several years by board member Patrica and also board member Gittens and board member Fisher, who have been the most recent liaisons to our committee, to move the committee from being an information-receiving body to one that truly makes recommendations to the board. And we not only have moved in that direction, but we are also starting to see real concrete impacts of our committee upon the school district. At our October 28 meeting, we had a presentation from the curriculum instruction group, which consisted of Ms. Alaretto, Ms. Huchin, and Dr. Quisenberry, about how Google Classroom was being used both for in-school students and home connect students. And there was some excellent back and forth between those presenters, along with the members of Dr. Siro's staff, the executive directors, on things that were working and things that were not. And I think it's really important to understand that, that that seemingly seems to be something that's somewhat consistent throughout the district, is that there are areas and schools and principals who are so far exceeding just being excellent. They're phenomenal, and they do a phenomenal job. And what we're trying to hope do is spotlight those people, so the district can say, this is how to do it. This is an excellent, excellent way of doing this. Let's get as many people as possible, if not everyone, all of our schools, all of our areas, doing that. And so we try to make it so that when we bring things up, it's not, the point is not to criticize, but to say, okay, this is okay. This is phenomenal. Can we get everybody doing it this phenomenal way? And so my point is that out of that meeting came a concrete document. Dr. Spiro worked with those folks and his staff to develop a Google Classroom best practices document that went to everybody in the district. It's my understanding, I think the board saw that perhaps in December, and that was pointed out to you. If you're interested, I'm sure I can follow up and have Dr. Spiro provide a copy of that to you if you want to see the actual document. But I think the contents of the document aren't what's truly important here from your perspective. What's truly important is this is real fruits of a partnership and the relationship that's been developed between the board and its advisory committee and staff, that they didn't just take things as complaints or comments, that they really distilled down these recommendations to say, and it's things as simple as, my student's math teacher lists the class as Mr. Smith's math class. My student's English teacher lists the class as English, Mr. Jones. And so when the child looks for math, one, he's looking for the teacher's name, and the other one, he's looking for the subject name. When some teachers put assignments on, I'll just say, the left side of the screen, and other teachers put it in a fashion so it appears on the right side of the screen. So it's like every kid has to know how every teacher fills the information out to figure out how to use it. And we talked about those things and ways to standardize this that makes life easier, not only for the students, but then for the teachers, right? Because they're not getting as many questions and issues and problems. And so we really put that together, and that was really excellent. It was very exciting, and I think that was very invigorating for the members. So that was a roundabout way of saying, that was our presentation in October 28th that led to that great success. And board member Patrica also talked about what was going on and the challenges the district was facing with the number of students returning from Home Connect to in-person school, as well as some of the information that was going on with the Health Department working with the school system to provide you with rapid testing kits to be able to try to better manage what's going on with the COVID-19 situation. So then that segued into our November 18th meeting, which was on the topic primarily of communication. Dr. Atkins came with, again, some high-level members of his staff, and I listed those for you in the report. And we had a town hall-style conversation. And by the way, we're doing all this via Zoom. And real kudos to Dr. Spiro and his staff, and Dr. Atkins and his staff, for how we've managed to have Zoom meetings with over 100 people. And they're going quite well. We're able to recognize people, have people speak, communicate, and go back and forth. And in fact, I think our participation has actually gone up in these. I think we're actually getting more active participation and more useful feedback. I don't know if your staff will tell you the same thing, but it seems that way from my, I see Dr. Atkins nodding, that it's kind of amazing that you would think this is a medium that's harder to communicate in, and somehow it's made everybody more focused, and we're able to really get this sort of synergistic back and forth. And so again, we talked about, the same way I just explained, communications. Again, talked about there's, you have some principals using tools like the Smores Newsletter, for example, one principal uses, or another principal has another method that they use. They have a phenomenal Facebook presence, and that's how they communicate with their teachers and students and staff and the stakeholders. And we talked about the difference between, everybody can just open a Facebook page for their, for their school. That doesn't make it successful. You have to have a certain dedication to it, and you have to use it in a certain fashion. You have to present the information out there. There were people that talked about how they got more information from their schools, or they found it easier, would be a better way of saying it. They found it easier to get information from their school's Facebook page about district-wide information than they could find it on the district website, because they followed their school, the principal distilled it to what they needed to know, and then put a link to the district page if they needed more information. But parents were saying, I found out about this from the Facebook page as the way to know this. We talked about how the Peachtree application works and School Messenger and some of the limitations of those and what can be done. There's a very detailed, the minutes are a very detailed document with questions and answers from staff about the minutia of how those things work and different ways to communicate for the district to best get its message out and get responses from. So I thought that was very productive, and Dr. Atkins committed to take this information back with staff and work through that, and again, try to come with a process to replicate these success stories throughout. And both Dr. Atkins and Dr. Spiro have done a good job of coming back to us a couple months after these types of meetings, started to give us this feedback. So hopefully, you know, either next quarter or worst case, the one after, you know, after that, we'll be able to come back again with another concrete examples for you of how feedback from the District Advisory Committee has been able to impact real change in how things happen with the school districts. We're very excited about that. Our next two presentations coming up are on academic performance. That's actually tomorrow night. And we're going to talk about where we're at, the impacts of the Home Connect and the pandemic on all of this, as well as how we're going to address testing. And of course, you know, and to the degree that the district has the information about how we're going to address those things for both the Home Connect students and the in-school students. And we're certainly mindful that that's a changing landscape where all of the information is not necessarily available. And that's going to be followed up by a meeting with the Proximity Task Force consultants folks. And also want to commend your staff again here. We've done something a little bit unprecedented with this one in that our executive committee asked for a preview. This topic has certainly generated a lot of comments and positive and negative and questioning and a lot of consternation in the community. And certainly, I think, being one of your largest committees, we thought it was important that we get a good grasp of what's going to be presented, and we actually wanted to offer our opinion as the executive committee as to the, whether we thought this was the information that was being presented at the right level to the members of our committee for them to then give you feedback. Your staff agreed, so we've actually going to have a slightly shortened summary presentation of that done to just our executive committee so that we can give feedback about whether we think this is the optimal way to present the information to our committee. So we can then work with the committee in the whole to then get you those recommendations that you're looking for and what people think about the elementary proximity plan changes and what's going on. So that's what's coming up in our future. That was a little bit about our past and how excited we are, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. And first, thank you so much for a very informative presentation. I think I am personally seeing a much better result in the last year or two with our advisories. I remember quite a few years ago when I was on an advisory as a citizen member, in your words, the committee that I was on was more of an information-receiving group. And now, it sounds like our committees are doing exactly why you are there, which is, in your words, making recommendations to the board. So I really like hearing that. I'm sure all of us do. And I did see some nods about the Zoom. I agree. On the committee where I'm a liaison, the first in face-to-face, we had a drop-off. And anecdotally, I've heard the same thing from several others. But anyway, questions? Ms. Patrica?
I don't have a question, Ms. I do a comment. You gave staff kudos for conducting the Zoom meetings, and I agree, staff deserves kudos, but so do you. As the chair of that committee, to be able to corral and manage that number of people in a virtual environment, I mean, we are always done at least a minute before the end time of the meeting, if not more. You keep us on task. I've said that before, but it needs to be said in a larger forum. And the other thing I really appreciate about you, Mr. Hertz, is you said DAC is no longer just a place to go and complain, and that's because of your leadership. You're able to see a complaint and determine what systemic issue is associated with that complaint and bring the focus to the systemic issue and away from the individual complaint. And that's what makes the committee effective or the council effective. So I really appreciate your leadership, and it's really been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, to me, that's the point. This isn't about any individual. Those should only be used as representative examples of something we can try to change to benefit all the students. That's why, that's why I volunteer my time. That's why I'm active in this, and I appreciate your support. And that's why I mentioned, I mean, we've been very lucky. We've had yourself as a liaison, who, I originally met you as a member of the committee before you ran for the school board. We've had Ms. Fisher and Ms. Gittens. And all of you have encouraged that type of thing and tried to, you know, no disrespect to staff, but hold staff accountable to make sure we get those responses. And you can see it, if you went back and pulled the minutes from four years ago and compared them to the minutes we have today, Dr. Spiro has helped put together a format where you see literally the exact questions with specific staff answers, and who gave us the answer. So there's real accountability. If the committee comes back and says, that's not what we are asking, and this isn't, I've made it clear too to the committee, this isn't about whether we like the answer or not or agree with the answer or not, but it's, did they answer the question? Did they avoid the question? That's not okay. If they answered it, we don't like it. That's the answer. We don't run the district. We're giving you our opinions. But it's really changed in that that doesn't happen anymore. We don't have those issues. We get clear answers to the problems, or we get a promise to follow up, and when we get a promise to follow up, they follow up. So there's been a huge change, if you take a look at that, in the level of detail. So I really appreciate the fact that you folks have encouraged your staff to be accountable, and Dr. Atkins and Dr. Spiro have worked to hold the staff accountable and to provide that kind of information so that we can be more useful in what we're trying to do here. We appreciate it.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I would just like to say, I really appreciate what you are doing and volunteering. As you said, you are volunteering your time, but it is really important what you're doing, and I thank you for that. And 100 people participating, that's...
Usually about 110 or 12, right? It's usually about 110 or 12 each...
That's amazing.
Each meeting. And I'm really impressed that people stay to the end, and they actually contribute. They comment and speak up, and we use the chat. We've come up with some great, again, ways of excellence. If other committees are struggling, I'll volunteer Dr. Spiro to share how we do that. But we have moderation going on in the chat, and everything gets captured. He has a phenomenal assistant in Ms. Grimm, who helps capture that for a minute. And I have yet to have anybody complain, I brought something up and it didn't get addressed or it didn't make it in the minutes, and we get answers to all those questions. And that's, I mean, I think that's the big takeaway for you, is people will step up to the plate if they feel like it's worth their time. If people are coming and you're just talking at them, and they're not giving any meaningful feedback, and they don't feel like their feedback is appreciated, they're not going to keep doing it. So I think our committee particularly appreciates the reactions we get. Like I said, this concrete change is really important, that we saw this best practices come out of things that we did. I think that helps motivate people to want to keep doing it. And I'm sure, you know, certainly you heard that in your construction advisory committee from Mr. Ryan. You heard that type of same feedback, because they see change. They see it makes something happen, and so they're willing to keep putting the time in. So I encourage you to do that across all of your advisory committees, is make sure that, you know, again, you don't have to always agree with what we suggest, but make sure that they understand the value like you're doing today and when you hear these reports. And I think you'll get more active participation. At least to me, that's the best way to do this.
And if I may too, I appreciate the fact too that you said that you may not always like what answer you receive, but you do receive an answer to whatever your question is, which I really appreciate that, and the fact that instead of finding it as a problem, you look for a solution.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that if most people could do that, we would be so much better off. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments, questions from the board?
Just thank you.
Yes. Thank you, and I always like a person who tells it like it is.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sort of famous for that.
Oh, yeah. And, oh, I also need to add, just for Dr. Spiro, I love that idea of the standardization of the successes and best practices. That's another one of my, so...
Kudos to Brooke.
Kudos from me personally on that. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, EDAC. Do we have a representative? Okay. And Dr. Blakely, if you'll introduce yourself?
Good afternoon. Chris Blakely, I serve as the vice chair for the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee and will provide the quarterly report on behalf of Chair Dennis Quisenberry III. Over the quarter, the Equity and University Advisory Committee focused our time on continuing and focusing on our goals. Similarly to some of the earlier reports, our meeting in November was canceled due to the hurricane. However, we reconvened in December, where the committee conducted a survey and an exercise with committee members to identify some topical areas for future meetings. The top four selections were trauma-informed care and mental health, inclusive education and culturally relevant teaching, the third being minority recruitment, and lastly, community relationships and parent engagement. This, these topical areas and information will provide the discussions and recommendations in our future meetings. In January, EDAC received a presentation from Davis Demographics about the ongoing proximity plans. This also was the first time it was presented to the committee, and our committee attended the in-person presentation for that. Our future presentations include Mr. Magnan, who has reached out to the committee to present on the student code of conduct, and we are scheduled to meet again on February 8th. So brief, concise.
Thank you. Board members, comments, questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for being here and your presentation. Appreciate it. And I know all of what you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, anybody else? And I'm, I just have to say that I'm the board liaison this year, and I am so enjoying being a part of that committee. And I know that we are very focused on bringing forth recommendations, as are, it sounds like, all of the committees. So that's terrific. Thank you, Dr. Blakely.
Thank you.
Appreciating. Thank you. All right. And finally, we have Finance Advisory Committee. If you'll introduce yourself, please.
Darrell Teblum, Chair of the Financial Advisory Committee. Back in September, we met, and we reappointed me as chair and Sean Williams as vice chair. During that time, we discussed the parliamentary procedures, and then we got into the audit. A motion was made by our, the Financial Advisory Committee to become more active in the audit scope and audit plans going forward, which passed anonymously. We have a lot of experts on this committee, from, everything from banking to audits. There's a good reason why that they're pushing that. This isn't the first time that we've pushed for more involvement with the audits, and several members of the committee over the last several months have even come forward again and requested that they become more involved in this and keep asking for copies of the audits, because they keep finding things of questions, which I've brought forward. In October, Dave LaRosa came and gave us an update on the athletics, as well as Roger Lloyd, Director of Transportation Services. During that time, a motion was made and recommended that the district conduct a survey to all the parents to find out why they're not using the transportation as much as before, and we believe that there could possibly be cost savings there. In November, Sarah Cox came, gave the committee an update on the half-cent sales tax, how it's being used. Many on our committee had questions on it, because we heavily recommended the half-cent sales tax, and many of us even helped promote it in the public. And that's about it for the time being. There was no motion brought forth during that November meeting, and the December minutes aren't up yet.
Okay. Sounds like another very busy and involved committee, which is great. Board members, comments, questions? Ms. Jordan?
Thank you, Darrell. As a liaison with the Finance and Advisory, I have definitely shared what we are working on as far as RSM and the audit committee, et cetera. So I do want to thank you, because every time I do come to those meetings, the expertise that, sitting at that table, you help me to understand what I should be looking at or what I possibly have not been able to see. So I do appreciate the talent and the knowledge of everyone there, and thank you for the hard work.
We have several former business and even federal auditor on our committee, and they've even requested that they be considered for the audit committee so that they can do both and be able to lend their assistance and expertise on both. So if that's something you're interested in, my committee is available at any time.
And if you go back to our meeting yesterday, we discussed that. So you can see the, we're in the process of working on the parameters of that particular committee, and it was discussed. So if you want to suggest that, they go back and look at. And our attorney is working on it presently. So the question I have, I see where you had, you know, Mr. Lloyd was there, and you mentioned about conducting a survey for parents to find out why they do not use district transportation. That's interesting to me, especially with us looking at proximity to lessen the students that use that. So can you just give us a little bit of insight as to how that conversation went and where it intends to go in the future?
Absolutely. Due to COVID, a lot of parents are now driving their kids to and from school. A lot of parents with students that can drive themselves or a carpool with other students, they're doing that rather than using our transportation. they're doing that rather than using our transportation. If with the proximity report, it's very possible that we might be able to eliminate an X number of school buses for each zone, which would be a considerable cost savings between repairs, fuel costs, staff costs, trying to get fill-in bus drivers when someone gets sick. I mean, instead of hiring new, we might be able to just use what we have each year and we might be better off. So we believe moving forward, especially with this proximity, and we did discuss that recently, that's something we believe that there's going to be an additional cost savings of. We believe if we talk to the parents right this second, we might get a better idea to forecast what our needs are going forward rather than just, we'll get it right from their mouths rather than our educated guesses from our experts. That may be a lot more beneficial.
And I appreciate that. You know, listen, I'm always talking about involvement from the stakeholders and getting their ideas and thoughts before we move forward. So I look forward to seeing where this goes and how, working with like the proximity committee as well, to see how that all kind of meshes together in their efforts with transportation. So thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else from the board? Dr. Atkins?
Just to use this opportunity to kind of springboard on what he just talked about, just for the information the board, I think, would need to have. You know, we typically transport over 50,000 students. You know, that's under normal conditions. Those numbers are literally cut in half. I think it's 23,000, 24,000 versus 50,000. That is going to have, of course, an impact at some point on our FTE. But it also demonstrates that, you know, parents, because of concerns related to the pandemic and also, of course, the leave-home connect and leave-virtual model, you just have ridership down. So I do think it's a good opportunity for the committee to look at this. The other thing, you may or may not be aware that we've always discussed, I think, a concern about the amount of our operations or our general fund dollars that are going toward transportation as compared to other large school districts. Now, part of that is because our ridership is way higher than most school districts. You know, we literally transport, I don't know about this year, but in years past, we've actually transported more students than Miami-Dade, which is four times our size. They just don't have near the ridership that we do. Part of that is because of our proximity, our student assignment system, and the fact that we have, you know, we also have a large geographical area that doesn't have a lot of infrastructure that you see in a place like Miami-Dade, which is more dense. You know, like in Palm Beach, they'll come in with a big 82-passenger bus in the neighborhood and pick up, you know, three bus stops and then they're at the elementary school. Whereas we do that very differently. You know, you have multiple buses go into a neighborhood and pick up multiple bus stops and just a few students. So I think there's a lot of opportunity here as we transition to proximity to capture some cost savings and also become more efficient.
Thank you for adding to that.
Okay. Can I ask one question?
Yes.
And maybe this is something off on Dr. Atkins, you can have someone look at. Mentioning the data of the number of students that we transport now, kind of comparing pre, you know, during and post-COVID lends itself to the question that the committee is asking to parents that if, when COVID is done and you're able to get back to normal, will you be doing this? And then also the comparison of the areas or zones where it's not an option for those parents necessarily across the district to say, okay, I want my child safe, so therefore I will drive them. Because then that drives our academics as to who is using home connect and who's not. If I don't have transportation to get them there safely, it's going to define whether I let them go back. So that kind of comparative data, if we could see it, would be good.
Okay, thanks again. Appreciate it. And thank you to all the committees and great reports today. So let's shift gears. We're going to look at Policy 2.34 on religious expression. And the presenter for this portion is our Board Attorney, Kathy DePree Bruno.
Thank you, Madame Chair. The policy has not changed from the last time. It's exactly the same. Again, this is based on the model policy. There was a question that was asked if there was a conflict where a child wanted to express their religious freedom, but there was a uniform requirement. Again, that's going to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. But I did want to point out to the board what that evaluation would entail. And it will look at the statute 1,002.206, subsection 3B, which states that a student may wear clothing, accessories, and jewelry that display a religious message or symbol in the same manner and to the same extent that secular types of clothing, accessories, and jewelries are allowed to be displayed.
Okay, so, board members, questions, comments? Ms. Gittens?
I have a question on number six, line 65. When you say limited public forum for student speakers and da-da-da-da-da, I think it is, B is must provide a method based on neutral criteria for selection of students. Do, would they have, would the students then that are having, let's say they're having, you know, the prayer around the pole, See You at the Pole?
I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, repeat that?
I said, you know, they have an event annually called See You at the Pole, where they all meet before school and pray in front of the school at the flagpole. So is this saying then to have those events, you would have to have, you know, whatever, maybe flyers or information that you're going to share approved by administration prior to doing it? I guess I'm saying, how do you govern this type of thing as to, you know, not discriminating against who attends and what they're going to say and...
So that's something that I'll have to check in with academic services to see what the current policy is. And then I can answer that question. But in reading, the statute would indicate that the student would request permission to be able to move forward and that it should be liberally granted. So that's a general answer, but more specifically, I'll have to check with academic services on that.
All right. Actually, I see in D where it says the district provides a disclaimer and there's student speech. I guess my question is, what kind of, you know, parameters do we have for checking that speech and approving it and seeing, you know, the handouts, who approves that?
So with regards to the specific guidelines, again, I'd have to check with academic services in terms of the guidelines that they have right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments?
No, I'm sorry.
Yes?
I was looking at when Ms. Gittens spoke of D, that's about graduation, the graduation speeches.
It is specifically about graduation for that one, yes.
Right, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay.
You see that?
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. DePree Bruno. Next, we are going...
Ms. Font, I just need a consensus that we can move this forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought...
Because the next step will be the public hearing. Thank you.
I apologize for cutting you off on that. All right. So next, we will look at Policy 5.08 on guest teachers. And the scheduled presenters are Dr. Angela Pruitt, Chief Human Resource Officer, and Mr. Will Rothenberg, Director of Compensation and Labor Relations.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. We updated, hopefully to make it clear, based on the feedback we received. So just, are there any follow-up concerns or questions?
Board members? Ms. Patrica?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was your handout.
The...
Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
Okay, on two, I think before we had or, so now you're saying a minimum of 60 hours college credit and an associate's degree because there's no and/or or in there, which lets it flow on to the next item. And then right after the degree piece, be currently employed by...
It says one or more of the following requirements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Other? Okay, so our show of thumbs, are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Luckily, it's six.
Same thing. We made some changes based on what was discussed and then added in the concern that Spock had in reference to the cell phone. And so we updated that. So again, I just wanted to see if there was any questions or feedback on the changes.
Okay, yeah. And we do need to move to that, to that one. If you want to stay up there, Mr. Rothenberg?
Yeah.
Still a presenter on that?
Sorry, I jumped ahead.
That's, that's, that's okay. Hey, right now, we are actually doing really well on time. And that's super. All right. So let's do that. Let's go ahead and move to Policy 5.29, which is managerial discipline guidelines for transportation employees. And certainly, Dr. Pruitt's welcome to stay there. On my agenda, I have Mr. Rothenberg and I also have Mr. Roger Lloyd, Director of Transportation Services.
So again, just made the changes that were reflected in the feedback and added the Spock that they wanted us to reference to the cell phone.
So, board members, Ms. Patrica?
I'm not, I'm not clear on the change on the cell phones. So a bus driver could be using a cell phone while operating a bus and get a three-day suspension?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. Isn't it, isn't it against allowing you to use your cell phone while you're driving?
Yes. So the request from Spock is based on the fact that there are cases where the dispatchers will text or call the bus driver to give some immediate information on a bus stop change or something in reference to a student because they can't get through on the radio. And so that's why we didn't want to go to immediate, you know, release of the employee because of situations where the driver may be responding to another transportation employee.
I get that, but I would hope that our drivers are not responding to texts about bus stops while they're operating the vehicle. That's the key for me. Like, I get that you have to use your phone sometimes in the presence of students and that can be explainable, but I don't, I'm not aware of a circumstance where it's explainable to use a cell phone or text while operating that vehicle. Am I making sense?
You are. And again, in most cases, the drivers will pull the bus over, but they're still operating the vehicle. And so, and I know that's some gray there, but that was the reason for the request is because there are those unique circumstances where that does occur.
Okay, Mrs. Gittens?
I agree with Ms. Patrica in that it is a law that none of us are allowed to do that. So with, I mean, I could see us getting into situations if we don't clarify that in writing what we mean, or something to the effect of after the driver has pulled over, safely pulled over to the side of the road, something that states that because otherwise the law says we're not supposed to do it.
Well, my response would be that it's recommended discipline. It's not automatic. And so what we're doing is allowing so that we can assess the unique circumstances that may occur and make a recommendation that would not be termination.
But would it be, I mean, example, a bus driver is driving along and taking a call as to where to drop a child and the police are riding along beside and happen to see them with the cell phone in their hand, what happens at that juncture? I mean, you know, they'll get a ticket or whatever, but then they may say, now, what are you going to do as an organization to follow up on?
Right. And again, it's recommended. So the recommended could be immediate termination based on the circumstances. Or if it's viewed as something less, it could be less than immediate termination. Again, we were in our interest-based process with Spock. They made the request. And since it is, again, a recommendation and not a black and white, if you will, that's why we were comfortable adding it in.
May I ask if these, if the drivers can do hands-free?
I don't understand.
In other words, do they, I don't know, you know, I use Bluetooth
Bluetooth.
in my car. And I don't know, what I'm asking is there a way for the cell phone to be hooked in, if not a Bluetooth, something like, you know, the Apple Play or any, you don't have that, but some mechanism in the bus where they could respond to calls from dispatch or somebody in transportation and yet not be driving with the cell phone in their hand?
Well, we're looking at electronics in general. And what we're looking at here is the exceptions to the rule. Our dispatchers will tell the drivers, please pull over to a safe location and give us a call. But there are situations, and these are when law enforcement's involved, where they will call us and say, we need to contact that driver. You need to talk to him. Anything we say over that radio goes to 350 other buses. So sometimes it's a sensitive nature as far as a student, hey, we have a problem, the sibling's on your bus, we need to do this, we need to do that. And that's where Spock got involved and said, hey, you know, there are times when emergency comes up, weapons on the bus. We don't talk to the driver like that. And there's times where we've got to do that. But they are few and far between, very few and far between. And again, where we say the first time is termination, if they're watching, if they're texting, if they're talking, they're terminated at that point. But this is a safeguard with that zero tolerance, then they're gone, but we're the ones that called them. And that's what Spock is concerned. But like I said, we're talking about very, very, very few exceptions. So...
Okay. So it's in part a privacy as well, not to put this on a speakerphone or something?
I think the other important distinguishing piece in this is that if you look at number eight, it says it could be in the presence of students. So if the driver does pull over and uses the cell phone in the presence of students on the bus, if we don't have the first offense recommendation, then it would appear that we would be terminating everyone immediately. And that is what Spock was concerned about.
Okay, Ms. Fisher and Ms. Jordan?
So, so my interpretation of that is if dispatch calls a bus driver and says, pull over and give us a call, and they pick up the phone and call, they're going to get a three-day suspension? I think that what the situation that is far and few, few and far between that you're talking about should have an individual designation. I mean, it's not like they're choosing to use their devices unlawfully if they're asked by their dispatch to pull over for an emergency call. That should not carry, I don't think, any kind of a discipline issue. They're following orders and they're pulling off the road for a valid reason. I mean, I don't think that should be lumped in there with any bus driver using a personal device in front of students or while...
or while operating a bus. Yeah, I understand that, that's punishable. But not responding to dispatch in a potentially emergency situation, that shouldn't be lumped in there, in my humble opinion.
And again, and I appreciate what you're saying and don't disagree with you at all. That's why they're guidelines and recommendations. They're not absolutes. And that's to give, to, to meet the need for people saying, well, I want an idea of what might happen given this event, you know, given this type of situation. This, and I will tell you that it's lots of hours in transportation labor management going over this and creating this language. But if, if the majority of the board is, is not accepting of the way it is, we'll take your recommendations and, and go back to tal... I mean, transportation labor management with your, your concerns.
So there's one little disclaimer or caveat there with the two stars, and it says, except for reporting an emergency criminal activity or suspicious activity to law enforcement or responding to district dispatch. Just to clarify that, so that they're not looking at a consequence for doing what they're asked to do lawfully. Just saying.
Okay, before we continue with board members?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to comment on what Ms. Fisher said. The language of except for comes straight from statute. So we just copied that from statute.
Okay, I think Ms. Dupree Bruno wanted to weigh in, and then we'll get back to the...
Well, I, I was, I actually was going to say what Ms. Fisher said and what Dr. Pruitt said, but I would also note that it's specifically applying to termination versus the initial suspension. So if you want clarification, now's the time to make sure that there's clarification on that. And I'm referring to the exception.
Okay, so let's continue with the questions, I think.
I was just going to say, I...
Ms. Jordan and Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. I agree with, with what Ms. Fisher had just mentioned, because I see that as an issue. But could you just not add the word "text" in there? So they're not texting someone versus a phone call? Because you definitely don't want them reading a text when they're driving versus picking up a phone and answering it to pull over.
I think that's covered under the electronic devices. Anything that they're texting, Bluetooth. There, there should be no electronics on there. And again, if you go back to the three-day suspension, they talk about it being on the phone in the presence of students. Something we absolutely do not want to do. But we do have drivers that get on bus ramps before the kids are dismissed. They'll be on their phone. They'll be scrolling through. Kids start getting on the bus. Now, we always tell them, when you hear that bell or that first child hits the bus ramp, your phone is off. It's put away. It's the rest of that. Does that always happen? No. Should they be terminated when we pull the videotape and basically they have the first 10 kids getting on the bus while they're still on the phone? And that's, I think, the leeway that Spock is looking at. And I can tell you, if they're on there, driving with the kids on the bus, and they're on their phone, unless we have, we have personally told them to pull over or law enforcement have contacted them, you're probably looking at a termination first time around. So, again, it really does go back to the exceptions. And that's any, any electronic devices, texting, Bluetooth, anything.
Okay, it's Mrs. Patrica and then Ms. Gittens?
I'm just supporting what Ms. Fisher said with some clarification in the except part. I get that that comes directly from statute, but I'd like our employees to know that if they're responding to you, Mr. Lloyd or someone in dispatch and one of their supervisors, then there's not going to be any offense considered or any consequence as a result.
Ms. Gittens, then Ms. Fisher?
On page three, under failure to answer, I was just looking at the first offense, and I don't know if this is something that's in stone that you have to do. But first offense being warning, could that be verbal warning? Because until, you know, all the facts are in, a warning and then a written reprimand sounds like there's two written things. So can, can you defend it, you know, make that definitive by saying a verbal warning?
I wouldn't be comfortable with that until we went back to labor management. Because again, this came through labor management, so I wouldn't want to commit to any. I understand what you're saying.
What is their definition then of a warning?
Well, I, I think verb, verbal would be the preferred, but my guess is there's probably occasions where they're not able to verbally talk to the person because they can't see them, so they might text it to them. They might send it in an email. So I, I think it's leaving the door open in case they're not... Because there is a timeframe for due process. And so if they can't get in front of that person in a timely manner, they may not be able to do it verbally. That is my guess, but...
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
So, it's been a while since I've been on a school bus, but I understand that there's still radio communication with buses. So if the dispatch calls on the radio, then the only reason that a personal electronic device would be used would be if it was something of a sensitive nature that could not be heard by the kids. So then they would pull over, pick up their phone, and respond.
We would, we would hope that what you're saying is true. I would say, I know sometimes there's challenges of getting a response on the radio initially. And so perhaps that could be a reason as well. You know, that for some communication that would need to occur, but they can't reach the driver on the radio to say, pull over and call me? I, I don't know. I'm just saying that that's a possibility.
I know that in the past, there's been like dead spots in terms of that radio in the county. And then also, if you've been on a bus lately, I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot of chatter. And sometimes it can be extremely challenging to get into that conversation. So all of that leads to some of these delays in a, in an emergency situation. You need to get to that driver as quickly as you can. I do think you guys have the ability, right, to shut, you do from your end, to shut things down so you can communicate in a case of emergency. But, but that doesn't go backwards. So, you know what I'm saying?
Right. I do understand, yeah. I, I'm just concerned that we don't put... You couldn't pay me enough to drive a bus full of kids, I'll tell you that. So I...
I didn't think there was anything you wouldn't do with it.
So I, I'm just concerned that we don't put any of our employees, our valuable employees, in a position to be penalized for responding to the dispatch. That, that's all.
So it sounds like maybe what you would like us to do, because we've heard from enough of you, to go back and sort of rework this a little bit more and bring it back to you for this phase again, if that would be the appropriate process?
Thank you. Is, Ms. Morgan, did you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add, no.
Okay, and I guess Ms. Jivinelli hasn't joined us?
I heard her click.
Just want to make sure from Attorney Bruno that that is okay and proper?
That's, that's the way I would go. And then the only other thing I would add, because I just looked at both of the statutes that were applicable, to answer Ms. Patrica's concern, I think having the first offense and second offense is more or less in alignment with the statute because the statute issues a citation first, and then it becomes a noncriminal infringement. So they have a step up as well. But I would probably add personal handheld electronic. And I think that would address, I believe Ms. Gittens made that comment. I would add that language in there, which would make it aligned with the statute as well.
Okay.
And Ms. Jivinelli? Are you there?
Yes.
Did you have anything to add to this discussion? We're about to take a consensus.
Well, I agree with Mrs. Fisher as well. So I'm, and I am listening to the conversation. I think it's been a very good conversation. And y'all covered most of everything, I would say.
Doctor, Doctor Pruitt has offered to take this back and make some of the changes.
I'd like to consult with, yeah, transportation labor management and further that discussion and make appropriate changes to bring back.
Okay, so, show of consensus. How many of you agree for Dr. Pruitt to take it back, make some changes, and then bring it back to the board?
I agree with that.
And I, I can't. Oh, okay, so unanimous?
Okay.
So that's what we'll do with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, can you please tell me what you wanted to do with regards to the guest teachers? Is that ready to move forward to the public hearing? That's Policy 5.08.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I...
Policy 5.08, which is the guest teachers. I would like consensus from the board to move that forward to the public hearing.
Oh, okay. I thought we did that, but maybe we didn't on that one.
We didn't vote on it.
Didn't we?
We did it, but we didn't take a consensus.
Oh, all right, okay. So, Policy 508, consensus on that one? For, for public hearing?
We did this.
We did.
We did.
That's okay.
We'll do it again.
We did the religious expression, and then we talked about 5.08, and then we went into 5.29 because there was a question.
Okay, well, if it's a second time, whatever.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah. We're, we're good?
Jivinelli?
And Mrs. Jivinelli? Okay, so let's record that as unanimous, 7-0 on that. Okay, we're moving into another phase. Is everybody good? Shall we do a six-minute break? How many, let's see, how many of you would like to take, let's say we're, we're on, we're on schedule, a break for about six minutes? Okay, so let's take a break. It is, let's call it 2:20 and be back here at 2:26. Okay, so it is 2:27 and we're back from our brief break. And we are moving now to the subject of Fort Myers Beach Elementary Bay Oaks Interlocal Agreement. And our presenter will be Ms. Kathy Eba. She's Executive Director of Operations Planning, I'm sorry, Operations Planning and Project Management. So, Ms. Eba.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins.
You're not on mic.
It might not be close enough to me. Nobody has ever accused me of having a light voice. Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins. I'm excited to bring to you the second part of our interlocal with the town of Fort Myers Beach. With me today is Chelsea O'Reilly, the Director of Public Works from the town of Fort Myers Beach. We are here to present to you the interlocal that was set up by, if you remember, we had a previous interlocal that we signed earlier this school year. This one is the one that flushes out some details. Specifically, this one establishes the requirements to replace the existing playground equipment, install a shade covering over the playground equipment, and replace the ground surface. Secondly, it requires the reconditioning of play courts and installation of shade coverings. Third, it requires the construction of secured parking area for use by parents, staff, and other visitors of Fort Myers Beach Elementary. And finally, it requires the installation of additional fencing and/or repair of the existing fencing to ensure all recreational facilities are securely enclosed during school operating hours. The agreement also includes the operations of a fee-based after-school care program by the town of Fort Myers Beach for the students of Fort Myers Elementary. The maintenance and repair of the shared-use facilities by the town of Fort Myers Beach. The exclusive use of playgrounds during school days and hours. And the schedule of the Bay Oaks Recreation Center amenities during school days. So this agreement establishes both what is required by both the district and the town as well as establishing the protocols and the standards by which we will maintain the agreement and ensure that ours are insured every year. It's an annual basis that we will develop the schedule for the upcoming school year. It doesn't establish that schedule so that there can be flexibility, but establishes the process by which that schedule would be established. Chelsea, did you have any?
That's it, you hit it.
Are there any questions?
Anybody? Ms. Jiminelli? Okay, if you would go ahead and proceed.
That was our comments. We just wanted to brief you about it at this point.
Okay.
And we will be bringing it back for approval and adoption at a future board meeting. We just wanted a chance before we got to a board meeting, if there were any further questions or comments about the agreement, that we would have a chance to make any amendments before we brought you the agreement to sign.
Okay, I didn't mean to imply that wasn't enough. I'm just looking that you had 30 minutes, so.
Well, last time it took us a little bit longer.
A few longer.
Yes. We were prepared to go into the discussion that we had for the first interlocal, but if there are no questions, then we're.
You never know. Okay, so, Ms. Fisher?
Well, no, then the other backup information that's available here, we don't need to be looking at that at this time.
That's what I was going to say. I don't know, Ms. Eba, if you knew that there was backup material on the agenda for this. There's a PowerPoint.
I wasn't aware.
That basically covered what she said, I think, didn't it? Yeah, it's a PowerPoint. And it's got maps and shows the land and specifically what the agreement is. And there is a schedule of sorts.
Since we have time, shall we just go ahead and go through?
I'm looking for the PowerPoint.
The PowerPoint, it's in our board docs.
May I ask a question?
Find that and then we'll go to the questions. Give her a minute.
While she's doing that, my name's Chelsea O'Reilly. Good afternoon. I just wanted to tell everyone here that our town council fully supports this interlocal agreement. We are, our council actually approved this interlocal agreement and fully supports this project. We just finished our 30% design. Our consultant is progressing to 60%, 90%, and then 100% design. Based on your first interlocal that you all adopted and the town adopted, we do have some time limitations with regards to making the improvements to the school board's property. Of course, we want to do that outside of school so the kids can have the benefit of the playground and the new structures during the school year. So we're hoping if this, we can get all of the legal papers done soon enough, that we can get this underway either this summer or next summer. So we are very eager and willing to make these improvements and work with you all in the future.
Okay. Thank you so much. Ms. Gettins, did you want to ask your question now?
Yes, I did.
All right, go ahead.
We were briefed on this pretty extensively and going through all of the details of it. So my main question is, the PowerPoint that we're looking at now, are there any changes from our previous meeting?
I'm sorry, Ms. Gettins, I didn't hear the question.
I said, we were briefed previously, pretty extensively, on this project with pictures and all of that. So my question is, are there any changes on this presentation that we have as opposed to what we were presented previously?
No. What this agreement does is further articulates the operational components of the previous agreement. The previous agreement established a framework for us to develop this part of the agreement, but it did not change it. We are in the process of developing the site plan with the village. We're at 30%. The documents are at 30% right now. When they are at 100%, they will come back to you for full approval. But it does not, nothing changed from the first agreement. The first agreement was the basis and foundation for the agreement we are at today. It just enhanced it and further explained and identified exactly how we were going to achieve what we established that we would do in the previous agreement.
So the pictures, for example, on the first slide, nothing has changed there. It's just the how. Okay, thank you.
Right. Nothing has changed. We are, you know, when we get to 100%, when we get to 100%, we will bring that full site plan to you with all of the final details. But we aren't at 100%. We're only at 30% right now.
Thank you. Okay, since we do have access to the PowerPoint and since we do have people that may be watching this, Ms. Eba, would you just run through this very quickly, refresh our minds, and for anybody who may not have heard the original briefing?
Yes, I'm happy to. I'm just, it's being pulled up for me. I'm sorry, I'm filling in for.
Okay.
I don't have my email up. This isn't my email. Okay, sorry for the delay. We were having technical difficulties. So to remind everyone, what we are looking to do here is a land swap with the town of Estero. We have land that they would like to use as part of a enhanced park system that they're developing for Bay Oaks. And we have the desire to enhance our recreational playground facilities for our students. So this agreement will provide, will give them the land that we own in exchange for ongoing maintenance and other improved services on our campus.
Okay, I think you said Estero and I believe you meant Fort Myers Beach.
I did say Estero. I meant town of Fort Myers Beach. So this is a sketch and description of our land. This is the shared-use agreement that, as I articulated earlier, the school district would have exclusive rights of the facilities during school day hours and then we would share with the town during non-school hours and non-school uses. I want to make that understood that we, this isn't only about the school day, it's about whenever we would need the campus to be used for our facilities and for our activities. The shared-use schedule would include the gym, the soccer field, the softball fields, and the tennis courts, and that the town of Fort Myers Beach will provide fee-based aftercare programs for Fort Myers Beach Elementary. The maintenance and repair of all shared-use facilities will be taken care of by Fort Myers Beach, as well as installation of new playground equipment and shade covering, the installation of shade covering and play courts, the secure fencing and upgrading of fencing as needed, and the construction of a secured parking lot for use of parents and other visitors during school hours.
And thank you for running through that again.
No problem. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties.
No, no problems. Board members, do you have any additional questions, comments, anything you'd like Ms. Eba to address?
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you for being here, Ms. Eba, and the presentation.
That goes in that.
You're welcome. We're, as I said, we're very excited about this project and we've been working with the town of Fort Myers Beach for probably about a year now to get us to this point. So we're really excited and we believe this is going to be, only increase the partnership and enhance the resources for our students.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move now to our Capitol Project Update. And the presenter for this, Mr. Scott Rickenbacher, Director, Construction, Project Management.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, Scott Rickenbacher, Director of Construction, and Kathy DeBate Bruno, Esquire.
Thank you.
Today's presentation, the January Capitol Projects Update. Centralized Energy Plant is currently going on. HVAC projects at Cape Coral Elementary School, we've begun the HVAC program out at that school. Excuse me. A substantial completion date anticipated August 8th of 2021. Fort Myers High School, also HVAC renovation, currently ongoing with a substantial completion February 1st of 2021. We have some additional work on there and that date will change at 2, will be 8/8/21. So we received some additional work out there that we're doing with some of our contingency money at the request of maintenance to extend that project. Latest aerial picture of Gateway High School. You can see right now, the grass is actually a little bit more established, the sprigging. We call it sprigging inside the softball, baseball, and the football program. We recently toured Dr. Atkins' last week through the campus. The interior finishes are complete. Painting is complete. We're in the punch list phase in all buildings. It's a pretty spectacular school and I look forward to you guys all getting to see the final product. And that has a substantial completion date of March 1st. So basically, we can take beneficial use of that school as of March 1st for district This is some of the interior pictures that you'll see. This is particularly a science lab in this picture where we have a folding door which accommodates whiteboards. That's a carryover from Dunbar High School. We implemented that in their biology lab and their science lab. Every time, as I talk to Dr. Atkins, every time we do a school, we expand on the things that have worked and benefited the school and just keep improving that design moving You can see some of the interior finishes again. There's the gym with the Gateway Eagles logo painted out. The locker rooms and shower rooms. You can see the kitchen. The pictures of the kitchen equipment installed and prepared for food service. Everything's ready to be started. Right now, the test imbalance, what that is, is the air conditioning balancing throughout the school is currently ongoing. It's 90%. We've attacked about 50% of the punch list. It's a large school, about 270,000 square feet, and you can only imagine, every single nook and cranny gets looked at. And the cafeteria equipment startup is for the end of this month. Building C, right now, this is a theater, the Black Box Theater at that school. We're putting the finishing touches. Again, punch list is going on and we're waiting on the delivery of the kilns and the pottery wheels. They'll be installed in the art rooms. Sidewalks, paving, sport fields are complete. Track is ongoing. And as I said, we've already engaged in the punch list. Lee High Acres Middle School. As you're aware, we're doing interior finishes within the school. Framing and drywall progresses. Our mechanicals are going on and we've loaded up what we call the central energy plant with all the major HVAC equipment. And that's actually being started up this week. Building 2, framing, drywall process, mechanical cabling and processes going on. As you can see in there, all that blue spaghetti that you see, that's all of our IT cable, Trey's World, going on in our IDF's and our MDF's. And again, that job will be substantially complete on, I believe it's May 15th is our substantial contractual completion date.
Yep.
Building 1, same finishing cable, drywall process. Building 3, this is the cafeteria building. You can see right there, there's the serving area in front and the gymnasium building right next to it. And the CEP power is turned on. We finally got our permanent power onto the facility from the electrical. It's been a tough run on this particular project because it's a private road and getting all of the utilities to come down with easements within FGCUA's easement and so forth was a challenge, but we finally did it and barely experienced any delays. But it was a challenge for the team to get that going there and kudos to Johnson Engineering for making that happen. Okay, I might have missed. There we go. James Stevens Pre-K opened up, as we said, it was completed by the first of this year. And I believe that there is staff out there beginning to start to load, you know, some of the classrooms with some of those pre-K students. They're gearing up and they're setting up. That was a successful completion. The only thing at this job they're waiting on right now, the federal funding for the playground equipment was a little difficult for them to acquire. So we have the playground established. We have the mulch sitting at bay right next to it, waiting for the playground equipment to be purchased by the federal program and installed. And then we'll finish the mulch and that finishes out the project. FMTC, right now, the RFQ process, as you are aware, has gone through. You've already selected the number-one ranked architect, building official, and construction managers for those projects. The next step is bringing the vendors in for contract negotiations and then obviously moving forward with the project. G Weaver Hips, that's where you folks are looking at some land purchasing next to G Weaver Hips to accommodate an expansion next to that for the pre-K function, federal function. Right now, the architect status, the RFQ has begun. They're reviewing and scoring the books. And the board, you should see on February 9th, that'll be brought, the ranking of the architects forward to you for approval. Building official, RFQ process has begun as well. They've already reviewed the books and scored them. And again, that'll be also brought to you on February 9th for ranking, for the building official, and also for the construction manager as well. So all three entities on that triangle will be brought to you on the 9th and we can get that moving forward once the land is purchased. But we can begin the design prior to that. Veterans Park Academy Arts, the RFQ process has begun for all three entities. And again, those three members, all three parts of that triangle, architect, building official, and construction manager will be brought to you for their ranking approvals on February 9th as well. So a lot of work is coming your way and a lot of negotiation to begin with. Roofing projects, North Fort Myers High School re-roof is about 50% complete. The job is going really well. The crews worked over the holiday break. The crews worked over the holiday break extensively and really got the schedule and got us ahead of where we need to be. So right now, we're on time, and we expect the substantial completion to be attained by March 8th of this year, 2021, and that'll complete that roof project. And that's just some of the, some of the looks, pictures you can see of what it takes to get that in, stripping the old off and putting the new back on. Lepek Building. Obviously, right now, we're in the middle of contract negotiations. We have an architect. You've approved a construction manager, and we're finishing up for our building official contract so that we can get this particular project underway while we still have dry season before the rains hit. So we anticipate that getting more, moved forward shortly. Cypress Lake High School, again, the owl that lives up in the roof drains. That project is going well. Over winter break, 28,000 square feet of roof was removed and dried in over that break. Without the students there, we're allowed to really dent these jobs and make some real big advancements. The manufacturer had actually shut down over Christmas break, so there was a material delay, but it didn't delay us from moving forward with the materials we had on site and with the labor that was available. You can just see some general pictures of the gutter mock-up and so forth, and you can see the process of the materials up on the roof and how sections get stripped and insulated and relayed and protected for the evening, for any possible evening rains. Other projects, we just did an RFQ presentation for Orangewood Elementary School Tower Removal. Oh, not presentation, I apologize. This was the final tower to be removed of the old tower systems that the district had. This one couldn't be done last summer during the break because we had to get some FAA permits and road closures. Those were attained, and this was done over Christmas break when the school was gone. So they're all finished up on that project. And that completes my presentation. In addition, we had the change order report for this month. For some reason, this will not open up even. Do you want to have the change order report on your screen?
We have it.
We have it.
It's hard.
Copy.
Okay, so...
Are there any questions?
Yeah, and, and in addition to questions on what Mr. Rickenbacher just presented, I know Ms. Patrica had some unanswered questions earlier that might be more appropriate to ask at this point, since we know Mr. Rickenbacher is an expert on all things construction.
He answered my question.
He did?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what questions do you have? Mrs. Gittens?
I have two. The first one is, we had discussed quite some time ago about James Stevenson, the fence in the back and the safety issue of the waist-high fence, and I don't know, because we hadn't heard anything else about it, was anything done with that?
At James Stevenson, the waist-side fence is the first I'm hearing about it.
It was discussed before in another meeting a while back, and I had mentioned that in the, in the back along the, that's facing the street, that there only, the only thing there was is a low fence, nothing that was like a security fence.
I'll look into it, but our protocol typically is a six-foot perimeter fence all the way around with gates, but I'll physically drive out there and take a look, and if that is not the case, then it will be changed out.
Well, it was not six feet when I was in one of the classrooms that was right next to it and next to the street, and I often said that it wasn't, it was a safety issue.
I agree. If that is the case, we will, we will get it rectified.
Okay, and if you would just let us know on that one.
Absolutely.
On Veterans Park, can you please explain, okay, on October 4th, the RFQ process began. So you are saying to the architects, "We want you to build this," and you give them parameters for it in order for them to give you a bid, correct?
Well, to present. They're a long way from the bids, but what they do is, we put an advertisement out for all architects to, to compete for the project. We give them a brief generic scope of what our intention is and what our potential budget is for that project site, and then they provide their books, their books for scoring into the procurement department based on the dates in the RFQ that were listed. A committee is formed to review those books and score them, many things, their previous past projects that are similar in size, similar in dollars, similar in square footage. Their financials are looked at by the finance department confidentially, and then it gets shortlisted. Based on those scores, they determine how many vendors that had applied will be shortlisted to come and present.
But they have to have some type of an idea of what it is you're looking for in order to respond to your, your request for RFQ, correct?
Correct, but it's, it's very general in nature, similar to like Riverdale High School. We're asking an architect to create a master site plan because we aren't 100% sure exactly what we need to do on that site and how we move through the building and repurpose the areas for other programs. So this is the beginning process. What that RFQ is, is you're picking an architectural firm based on their skills and their scoring to help us design and come up with a plan.
Okay, and then on January 5th, when you reviewed and scored, did that include any designs or no?
Not at that point. What that does is, once, once you approve the ranking, we start negotiations with the number one firm to negotiate to see if contractually and financially, we can even engage with them to do the design for us. That's the point where we will include, we, we contract them, we get them on board, we bring them in. We usually, in this case, there are principals available. They will sit in on the design meetings. We invite them to those design meetings, and they become part and parcel of it. We also have curriculum sits in on our design meetings regularly on all the schools, finance, and we start developing the site. And ultimately, at some point, I will come to you with some boards showing you schematically what we're talking about and what, what the product is going to be.
Okay, so, were they instructed that it was going to be one massive school?
That was when the decision was made for the Lambs to be shifted and MM became New Lambs. That was the point in time where I was indicated or informed that it was going to become a pre-K 8 school.
That was going to be, all of Veterans Park was going to be, that was not going to be named a new school for the old Lambs. It was just going to be one massive school.
That is correct.
About 2,000 to 3,000 students.
That is correct. I can't say for certain exactly what the number count was.
Right.
But it was going to be a large pre-K 8.
So on February 9th, when you're saying board approval, what are we approving?
You're approving the ranking of an architectural firm for us to engage into a contract so that they could create a design for us.
Okay, and the design being the K through 8 total with everything?
That is my, yes, that is correct.
Okay, that, that is my concern, and I understand on December 18th, you applied to DOE for these applications to, you know, to go forward with this.
Correct.
As, as a mega school.
That, that is correct. They have to do a spot survey and get the state's approval, but usually, we will move forward with RFQs. It doesn't, it doesn't obligate us to anything until we're in contract, and usually, staff feels that when they have the numbers and they can qualify the numbers, it's a matter of formality to send that to the state for that spot survey approval.
Okay, so, here's, here's my bottom line to this. We've been told that we would have community involvement. So number one, it was already decided by someone that it was going to be a mega school and not two K through eights, but just one large school. We had this discussion on calls with the, the East Lee Co-op, and we were told that there is a possibility to discuss it and ask the community. And we talked about why we felt it would be better to have two smaller schools than one major large school. We were told that there would be time for input, but my, my concern about this is, we're moving along with all of these steps, and at what point then are you going to get involvement? Because once you've got the architects, you've got the designs, you've got the plans, and then you're going to say, "This is what we're going to do," as opposed to, "Here are some options."
Well, might I interrupt for a second? We provide that on every school we build, but I can't come to and have a community meeting without some kind of schematic design and some boards to show. We, similar to what we...
No, and I, I totally understand that.
Once we have them engaged and under contract, that's our first order of business. A schematic design, some boards, and we will hold a community event on there, which will include both principals and the teaching staff in that school. And that's where we get the feedback initially. We did that on Gateway High School. We did that on MM Middle School before it came to New Lambs. We actually had a community meeting and nobody showed.
Now, I understand, I understand that that's going to be the pushback. Can I just say though, the application you sent to DOE was for the mega school. It was not for an option. My concern is, because it's happened previously, that we on February 9th approve this project, and it is going forward as whoever, whenever decided that that's the way it was going to be. It didn't come to the board, it didn't come to anybody. Someone decided, rather than having two separate schools, that we would have one major one. It is my concern to vote on something that I'm not sure what it is. So that, that's, and we can talk about it later. I'm done.
No, no, no.
Don't stop. Say I have to stop. I know, I'm done.
No, 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 that's not, don't second guess me. What I was going to say is, before we have more comments and questions, it looks like Mrs. Eba has something to add, am I correct?
I'm just ready to answer anything about the...
Okay, and Dr. Atkins, do you have any additional answers or comments for Ms. Gittens' questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, so, did you want to address any of it?
Well, I just would ask someone to say who made the decision that, first of all, that Lambs was going to move to the new building and be called Lambs, when you told the community during the time of Gateway that there would be an option, an opportunity to have input and name two schools, an elementary and a middle. Well, that was taken away, and it was named, and it was started, and it was built before the community had any input. Somewhere along the line, it was decided what would happen with the old Lambs is that we would have a mega school. And I, I don't know who made those decisions. That's all I'm asking.
Somebody, can we get an answer?
I will, I'll answer this. I mean, I believe we made this recommendation a while ago. We have discussed this at multiple times.
Okay.
I, I, we keep talking about it. I don't know what else to say. We, we, we did, I mean, if I were to revisit anything, it'd be the decision to, to move Lambs to MM, but I still think it's in the best interest of this school district. I've talked about ad nauseam why that was necessary, I believe, for the renovation of that school site is something that we need to do. This is, the plan that the team has put together is in alignment with the capacity needs of the east zone. It is in really almost perfect alignment, and, you know, we get paid to make decisions and, and what's, and recommendations related to what's in the best interest of, of the school district, and we do have timelines that we have to move forward. Is there time for public input? Yes, we've received public input on this and other things, and we'll continue to receive public input. I don't, I really don't know what else to say.
The issue is that when any input is given, it's too late. You are already moving ahead.
And, and you have made that point.
With what you want to do because you feel that it's in the best interest, and so I, I'm not going to argue it, I lose.
I think we're at the point asked and answered, so if, if there's still discussion here, perhaps you and Dr. Atkins can have a one-on-one to, to continue the conversation. All right, so, Mrs. Jordan, or Ms. Jordan has...
Thank you. I was just going to say, I, I think it's important that we always are preparing ourselves to whatever we need to do for the best interest of the community, so I appreciate that. And I did speak to, and I believe his name was Mr. Clark, if I'm mistaking, the principal at Veterans. Is that his name? The, the new principal?
Oh, Ms. Ed Carter.
Carter.
Carter, thank you. Okay, I, I met him last week, and he's excited about his school, and I know he's talking with Ms. Eba and whoever the people are to make that school what it needs to be. So he is, has the opportunity to put input into that. So I, I just think that, you know, naming a school, I mean, is that important to some people? Maybe, but I think at the end of the day, we have to make sure that we are giving the zones what they need and making sure that these children have a place to, to learn.
Well, may I please respond to that? Because this is important.
Let's see if, sorry, let's see if anybody else has a comment, and then I will come back to you. Ms. Morgan?
Okay.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
I don't even have any idea what we're talking about.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I don't, I don't even have any idea what we're talking about, so no, I have no comments.
Okay, Mrs. Jevanelli, any comments?
Yes, I do, actually. I have a couple. Ms. Gittens is correct. We were told that they were, the school was going to be named, and the community was going to have input, and there really hasn't been. Yes, the staff made the decision to make a mega school, but we never really had a conversation on mega schools, what's really good for our students. And the information that I received, not all mega schools are ideal. So, I think that, that's a conversation that you probably should have as a board, and that's another time, I'm sure. I do have a question for Mr. Rickenbacher regarding Fort Myers High School HVAC, where they had the crane that, that bumped a building and cracked a building or something. What was the status and the outcome of that? I haven't ever heard anything or had an update.
By the carriers' insurance of the construction manager. It was, just so everyone's aware, we, we were loading equipment out with a small crane. It went over a speed bump and rolled and bumped the, one of the locker room buildings across the, the back roadway, created some stucco damage. We immediately called the insurance company of the construction manager. We alerted Johns Eastern, our carrier, Tracy here in the building. We photographed it, we got a claim number from them, and we had a structural engineer come at their cost to make sure there was no structural damage, which I visually went up on the ladder myself to ensure there was none. And now they're in the process of repairing the stucco, the control joints, and then we'll repaint it, so it's good as new.
So it was basically minor damage?
Very minor, yeah. Literally, when I say he bumped in it, it went over a speed bump and it just rolled, but you've got to realize, 170-ton crane with a slight roll can take out the stucco. And I just wanted to make sure there were no structural issues involved with that bump, and there were none.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, before I come back to Ms. Gittens, anything else? And, Ms. Gittens, do you have anything additional to ask? I think the, the, who made the decision is going to be a...
Well, it's, it's just interesting that the, the basic comment is that staff is paid to make decisions, but we have to understand that we are here for oversight, and you can't oversee something if you don't know what's going on. And when you talk about doing what's best for children, especially in the east zone, building Lambs and moving those students did not affect the number of students that are still in Portables. And in fact, by building 1,200 seats at a 1,400 possibility, 200 students are still going to be in Portables behind Veterans Park until the rest of it is done. I just, I just feel that if, if that is the case, that staff makes all the decisions and we are just supposed to stay in our lane and not ask any questions and not involve the community, why does that happen in other parts of the county before things are done? And I understand we're not incorporated in the east zone, but that shouldn't matter. So...
Can I respond to that, please?
Okay.
Again, I don't, I really take exception to how this is being portrayed. We take input all over the school district, and I truly believe that we treat all zones equally. If anything, we have put an... If anything, we have put a lot more attention in the East Zone recently under this team than any other. I've talked about starting at Dunbar High School, TICE, which are also in the East, the expansion of Lehigh, MM, J, Gateway High School, and on and on. We've talked about why the Portables are the way they are. It used to be that way out West. Okay? Out West in the day, there was Portables on the Green, hundreds of Portables out there. It's, the district has to react to where the growth is, and we didn't have a half-penny sale. So all this stuff we've gone over, that's the frustration, is that we've talked about this and talked about it and talked about it. You know, like I said, if I could go back and revisit, we would come here and have had the discussion at more length about moving Lambs. That didn't happen. I'm sorry, but at some point, we have to move on. I mean, we made that decision, and again, explained why. The rationale for that decision was explained. And I do know that we have talked to, you know, board members about these things, talked about capacity a great deal. We've had one-on-ones. We've had meetings with the operations team one-on-one, just to try to explain all of this stuff. And still, it's not going to be enough. So I don't know what else to do at this point.
Well, there's nothing else to do. The decision's been made, so we're done.
The way it's being portrayed, the way it's being portrayed is what I take exception to, because basically, that's saying we're making decisions in an inequitable manner on purpose, and that is simply not the case.
Okay. In this, at this time, excuse me, Ms. Gittens, at this time, I believe the conversation on this is closed, and we're going to move on to public comment. Attorney DePree Bruno, would you please read the guidelines for that? Do we need to do the...
I don't believe anyone's here for public comment.
Yeah, that's what I, as soon as I said that. Is there anybody in the room that is here for public comment? Does not look that way, so we will skip the public comment, since we have no one to do that. All right. So now we're at board member comments. And let's start with Mrs. Morgan.
I have none.
Okay. Then, Mrs. Jivinelli.
I have none.
Okay. Mrs. Patrica.
I'm going to give my report today, rather than tonight. First of all, I want to apologize to y'all. Last briefing, I spoke to the public. I responded to public comment. I believe that is the job of the chair and the superintendent. It was a briefing, so it felt less formal to me. So I apologize for doing that. I shouldn't have done that. I should have left that up to you. I did do the right thing. I did do the right thing. I attended the Do the Right Thing Awards this week, and it was so awesome to be around kids again. It was so, so awesome to be around kids again. And it's so funny, because we were talking about transportation, and we're talking about K8s, and I get that there's some negativity in the community surrounding K8s, but I personally think the benefits outweigh the potential negatives. But those three kids that saved that bus driver were awarded for Do the Right Thing. And if we didn't have middle school kids on a bus with those kindergartners, that opportunity for good would not have occurred. Anyways, I just, I know that we're in the time of COVID, and I know people are uncomfortable being around each other. I was next to each kid for a total of 15 seconds, and it was just so refreshing to be back with kids. So I would like to congratulate Ms. Gittens on being one of this year's Keepers of the Dream. I thought that was quite an accomplishment. I was really surprised when I logged on to the MLK, which typically is breakfast, and saw your face there. You were the cover photo, so I thought that was fantastic. I believe that yesterday, people asked me to give an update on planning and zoning. But Dr. Atkins, can I ask a question before I talk about Astero? I know that, I know that capacity at Astero schools, in my mind and the information I feel I need in order to be in a decision-making capacity, is 105%, maybe 106% capacity there. But I also understand that a question was asked of Mr. Hume at the planning and zoning meeting, and he gave a different number. Can I get some clarification on that? Do you have anyone on staff who...
I think we can certainly provide clarification on that. As I understand it, you know, you've got overall subzone, zone capacity and subzone capacity overall. Then you have specific capacities at schools. So a particular school might be at 112%, 114% capacity, but the zone capacity would be a different number because it's an average. But I don't know if anybody could provide, and we can certainly provide additional clarification, but that in generally, that in general is what the difference is. I know Dr. Savage is working to get the comments from Mr. Hume down at that meeting, and so he'll provide a little bit more specifics as it relates to that question. Anything else? Kathy?
Good afternoon. Yeah, I have a little more information on that. The question was raised at, by staff, to, by the Astero, the Astero staff, to our team staff, our project staff, not necessarily at that meeting, but in preparation for the meeting. As you may recall, the January 19th meeting was a continuation of the December 15th meeting. And in the meeting, in the inter-meeting time, Dana and myself met with Ms. Gibbs, who's the Director of Community Development for the town of, or Village of Astero. And she asked us to be prepared to provide information about the school capacity in the schools closest to that site. So what Dana did was an estimated capacity of three schools, of schools that are closest in that area. He was actually off by about .6, I believe. It was slightly less than the 112% that he made comment at the meeting. But that's where, that's where it came from. It was a specific question asked of town staff, or asked of village staff by us, and being prepared to present it in the, at the follow-up meeting.
If you get a zone number, a zone average, it takes into effect a lot more schools, it's going to be a different number.
Okay, good. Thank you. And I feel like that level of detail you just gave me is not necessary for me as a board member. When, when Mr. Hume was presenting to the Planning and Zoning Board, and he said that number, 112%, I knew it was different from the number that's seared into my brain. But I also know that he's a professional who has submitted an application and has access to information, not because it's denied to me, but because he's a professional who's doing his job. So I didn't, I wasn't alarmed when I heard 112%. I didn't question. I assumed he was being a professional and doing his job. And I wanted to say that for two reasons. There's, I know there's been a little bit of criticism here at the board table, but there's also been some criticism by people in Astero regarding his work. And I mean, I've never known Mr. Hume to be anything other than a consummate professional and has done really, really good work for the school district. So all of that aside, I attended the Astero Planning and Zoning Board meeting, in which they discussed the school district's request for a comp plan amendment. As you said, this was an extension of a previous meeting where, it's my understanding, they were asking some questions and sort of go outside the realm of what a comp plan amendment is, but staff accommodated the request for information. Ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Board voted 6 to 1 to approve the comp plan amendment. So what that means is, they will recommend that the village council itself adopt that comp plan amendment, which is the first very preliminary step that's needed in order to build the school at that location. Otherwise, in Astero, there's some changeover on the village council. I don't know if you all are aware of that, but there are three new council people have been elected. I say elected in quotation marks because they all ran unopposed. We are unfortunately losing Nick Bedos. He will be replaced, so they are in the process of determining who their new liaison to the Astero initiative will be. Obviously, when that process is complete, I will let you know. And I will tell you that, you know, Ms. Morgan mentioned yesterday some confusion in the community. There is confusion in the community about the board's approval or the board's desire to have a school in Astero, and whether there's actually a need for a school in Astero, because they're getting mixed messages from, from members of the leadership team. And that's a little bit difficult for me, you know, when I'm in the grocery store, when I'm at church, or wherever I am, wherever I am, that's been a little bit difficult for me. The last thing I'll say about this is, there is a group of people in Astero who are concerned about the location. And Ms. Morgan, I hearken back to before I got on the board, and when I first got on the board, what you had to do for Benita Springs High School. I'm now appreciating the work that you had to do there. A lot of it is just being patient and overcoming misinformation. You know, there are concerns about wetlands, and there's concerns about traffic, and there's concerns about wildlife, and, and all of those concerns will be addressed, but we're so early in the process that you can't give anybody really specific answers yet. The bottom line is that this school will benefit thousands and thousands and thousands of people, and, and there is a small group of people who live in homes that abut the school that are, that have raised these concerns. So I am committed to continuing to work with them and hold their hand through the process, understanding that we're probably never going to agree. The bottom line is, what I saw at that meeting, it was, I believe, very uncivil. I think the way a lot of the comments were made, and the heckling, and the hooting, and the hollering, and the jeering at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting was, was very uncivil, and it was, it was uncomfortable. But I believe it's a reflection of where we are as a country right now, in terms of a lack of trust for government. And even though the Planning and Zoning Board in Astero is unelected volunteers, they're perceived as being government, and it's almost okay to treat people that way. And I was disappointed. I certainly am not going to conduct myself that way with this group moving forward, and I would hope that conversations instead of accusations could be the way we, we go forward. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
I have no comments right now. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Jordan?
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to give my legislative report as asked. So, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget anything. I've been visiting with our legislators prior to them leaving to go to Tallahassee to share our legislative priorities with them. And I have been able to get an appointment with all of them, and I have been steadily working to try to get one with Senator Rodriguez, which at this time has not been successful, but I will not give up on that one. I've met with House Representative Spencer Roach, and he is offering to share any information that we may have to go out to the community, along with his colleagues, regarding proximity or anything that's important to us that we need to get out. He wants us to be able to use him as a method of spreading the word.
Awesome.
Which I, yeah, I thought that was great. Representative Otana, he went with Ms. Stillwell. Thank you very much for doing that for us. Went and visited with our schools. He doesn't have any children in the schools, so it was good for him to get out there and get in the schools and see what was going on. And same with, let's see, Ms., Representative Pierce, Jenna Pearson, and I cannot pronounce his name.
Gembardo.
Gembardo. Thank you. And it was just good meetings with all of them, and they're very caring and concerned about, you know, what is going on in our community, the county, the district, and as well as Senator Pasadoma, who was extremely excited and interested in career and technology. And actually, every one of them were very much interested to hear what we have going on here, and excited about that. So they want, and they're actually in committees right now, and most of our representatives are on education committees, just have to let you know that, which is a good thing. And, and a lot of what they're speaking about is career technology. And I did share Rita Davis's name with them, because I felt that that was, anybody who speaks to her will definitely appreciate what we do. And we are tracking, all the FSBA is tracking all the bills that are going through, so as they come forward and they move along, we'll definitely keep you a pride of that. I also had Representative Roach reached out to me today, his assistant, and they all, all of his colleagues have interns. And so what they're trying to do within the city and the county, as well as the school district, is try to find a way, if they can, take their interns that they have in their office to keep in touch with us and kind of work with us to bring back information to them. So they're always aware of what is taking place, and they can help us, which I thought was excellent. Let's see. And then, and then today at 4:00, House Educate, the House Committee is meeting on House Education and Employment Committee. They're meeting to hear a presentation on comprehension, coordinated workforce, and education system regarding the rapidly changing workforce. So that's taking place today at 4:00. And that's pretty much what's going on as far as the legislative. As I said, I have a whole, and I know this is going to kill Christopher Trica, but all of these are bills that are going through right now. They had a thousand or some bills that were sent through already. And so we're keeping track on the ones that most definitely will be affecting us, and as I said, as they come forward and they're moved to either way that's going to affect us, I will let, bring that before us. And I know Mr. Prey Bruno also had sent us all some legislative issues as well. And then we, as a board, we sent a request to the governor, requesting that they prioritize the teacher and support staff with the COVID shot. And as well as that, we have received letters of appreciation for partner, partnering with DOH and the amazing execution of the vaccines to our employees. So thank you, Ms. Swift. Thank you, Ms. Stillwell. Thank you, whoever else was involved in that.
Dr. Pruitt.
Dr. Pruitt, whoever I'm missing, I apologize, but thank you. And, and I have to say, I am so excited about the Castaldi report. I have to say that again. And I will keep saying it until I see the actual work and the pictures and the maps. But thank you, Ms. Eba, because I know you have just been making sure that you make that phone call, so thank you for that. And then last, but not least, oh, thank you, Ms. Patrica, for being there, for those kids, especially from North Fort Myers Academy. They're amazing. And actually, North Fort Myers Chamber really wanted those kids to receive an award, so thank you for being there. And the Cape Coral Police Department is now taking applications for Do the Right Thing scholarships, which is being accepted for 12th graders who reside in Cape Coral. And they have a total of six that will be given out. They have an application online that the students can apply for. I think they have four that are 1,500, and then I think there's a couple that were 1,000, and maybe 1,500, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
But we need to make sure that we, you know, if we know people in that area, that we put that information out for them to apply for that. And last, Ms. Gittens, congratulations. That was amazing that you received that award.
Thank you.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. One thing I wanted to bring up, and we, I noticed just recently, we started getting emails from, there was one from a parent about graduation. You know, and as, as far as I understand, we're kind of still in COVID land and not knowing what's going to happen. I did hear that there was some, that the staff or the district was doing something about graduations. But if we recall last year, when we had all the situation with the lack of parent involvement, I am asking my colleagues and Dr. Atkins to consider having a task force or something that includes parents and children, students that will be graduating, to get their input and avoid what we went through last time, in case there, you know, with COVID, we and avoid what we went through last time in case there, you know, with COVID, we cannot do a traditional graduation. I think we need to have a Plan A and B. Of course, everyone, I'm sure, praised that we can have Plan A, but it may not happen. So involvement with those, with some parents and some students and administrators would help. At least they would see that they are being included and their thoughts and questions. Like I said, we're starting to get emails, and they'll only get more. So why not look at it at this point and involve them in the decision rather than at the end, after it's already done? Mister, you mentioned that Mr. Carter is all on board with, you know, the new project, and I'm sure that he is, and I've spoken to him too. And Ms. Eball said that they spoke with him and told him what the project was and that he was all on board for that, so I just want that on the record. There's been a lot of discussion recently, several times, people have mentioned the tech center out in the East Zone. And I'm a little confused because, what, a month or two ago, we were told that it was put on the back burner for a 10-year plan instead of five-year plan, but I keep hearing it coming up. And I've also heard some other things that are going on with it. So I would like to ask Ms. Patrica and Ms. Morgan to please update us on your, what's going forward with staff and East Zone community as far as the tech center in the East Zone.
I don't have any idea what you're talking about.
I don't either.
I can give you an update on a couple of those items.
Dr. Atkins, if I may interrupt, I think I heard you. Why do I feel like I was watching you on Zoom somewhere? When you were answering a question and you talked about the excitement of building a tech college out east. And I know that in our five-year plan, five-year capital plan, we approved.
No, it's 10-year.
I know that in our five-year capital plan, we approved updates to Fort Myers Technical College, and we approved a building of a technical college out east in the 10-year plan, but beyond that, I know nothing. So I don't, why are you calling me out? Ms. Gittens, mask.
I am asking because just as I was called out yesterday about speaking to people, I was informed by people that there was some.
All right. Point of order on this. This is, excuse me, we're not going to do this, so.
Okay. Can I finish my comments?
You can, yeah, finish your comment, please.
The reason that I bring up the tech center is that it is something that we really, really need to look at. And since it was moved to the 10-year plan, we need, one of the suggestions I had brought up when I first came on the board was not a mega building, but looking at some existing, possibly commercial property that we could use to have a start out smaller with some of the areas that are in desperate need in the technical realm and that they're looking for people to work. And to start out with something smaller to work with the businesses to have those needs taken care of rather than waiting till the 10 years, we could be doing something small along the way. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. I have something else to say, but I will hold it until this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And having a moment, Ms. Jiminelli, did I, I think I called on you already, didn't I? Ms. Jiminelli?
She did.
I thought I did, but I just didn't want to leave you out. I do not have comments. Board Attorney, Ms. DePree Bruno, do you have comments?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Dr. Atkins, comments?
Just a couple in response to some of the issues that were just raised relative to graduations, if recall. I think Mr. Simmons talked to us about, we are looking, there are a couple dates that are coming forward at tonight's board meeting. That's if we're able to use the big venues. I know we have RSW that has committed, still working on FGCU, I believe. However, the principals, in his words, I think they were, you know, they were absolutely committed to having an in-person graduation. If we were unable to use the venues, then the high school stadiums would be what they would be working on, so they do have a backup plan in place for that. The plan would involve doing something, you know, earlier in the day because you do have to worry about Florida weather, so it's kind of going back to the way things used to do, you know, the way it used to be in Lee County where you had high school graduations in the stadium. And they have discussed putting together communication to go out to seniors and their family with updates. So that's what has been going on, and I believe we did share that with you. But just as a reminder, again, dates tonight for the big venues, just to secure them, and then as a backup plan, the high school stadiums are the backup plan, absolutely committed to doing that rather than what we did this past year. The other thing, as it relates to the technical center in the East, you know, and Ms. Gittens, you and I had this discussion. You had shared with me about your concern about the 10-year plan, and I said to you at that time that I shared that concern and that I was, because it's a part of the big, the reason it's part of the big five is I believe that technical colleges are something we certainly need to expand in our community. I hear it, I know board members hear it from people that are out in our community, that this is certainly something that they would like to see us do because they're not, the trades are just one example. Lee Health in the medical field is another example, and on and on and on, where we need skilled workers. And also it gives a kid an opportunity to earn a skill and not have to accumulate a lot of debt at a college or university. And we're watching college and university enrollment actually go down, so students need other opportunities. So I'm committed to that in the East Zone, and I think it should be moved up in terms of the priority, and I have communicated that to staff, and they are working on that, and we'll be back before the board. Remember, the CIP is a living, breathing document. You look at that year that we're in, that's pretty rigid, but as you get further out, it gets much, much mushier for using that technical term.
Absolutely.
And it is responsive to priorities of the board. The other thing, though, I do want to point out that Cape Coral is our largest city right now, and I'm also concerned about the fact that in our largest city, we have a very small technical center that has not grown in all that time. And it also is more of a white-collar type of technical center in many ways. Now, it does have cosmetology out there, but medical and so forth. Culinary arts it has.
Veterinary.
Veterinarian.
Veterinarian, yes. So we do feel that there's an opportunity to expand in some other areas of the trade, such as, you know, the marine engines, automotive, those type of things, because there's a need out there as well. So I'm committed to doing all of that. I think we need, I think we need something, not only renovation of Fort Myers Technical College, but we also need something in the East Zone, and we need an expansion in the West. So we're working on all three of those.
May I ask a question about technical colleges? Has there been any discussion of satellite campuses in the south part of the county? Without building an actual center, just having the ability to learn down there and get certifications down there?
We have had discussions about that. I think they're just in a kind of an infancy stage, so.
If I may, I think that there is a big component of the business community, construction community in the Cape who are interested in that, that kind of concept also, and frequently ask when we're going to expand. So that's another conversation. And backing up to a comment that was made by Mr. Richards when he gave his construction advisory report about, you know, that they didn't know what was going on at FMTC, I think that we really need to use our marketing in the district to get that out there a little bit more and to try to send out links to their websites, because what's happening there in the area of career and tech training is amazing, and I think that we would get even more business support and input if there wasn't a heightened awareness. So thank you for that.
Can I just ask, Dr. Atkins? You mentioned about.
Go ahead.
This is something that we're going to be voting on tomorrow, those two properties that we discussed. And one was on 82. So my question is, was that a possible location for a technical center as opposed to a K through 8 location?
I'm not sure that those aren't the ones that we're voting on tomorrow. However, to answer your question, because I think it's the, what's the one at Riverdale and also the one that is by G. Weaver Hips, I believe are the two that, the two that you're talking about, the one off of 82, and then the other one, which is the old golf course property.
Milwaukee, right.
To answer that question, yes.
Okay. That, well, I mean, that's, from what I hear from the community, that's optimal to have on 82, something that's more conducive to adults because of the traffic flow on 82, trying to get children in that high-dense area across the street would be just, you know, pretty crazy. And then with the opening in the next, probably less than five years of the Alaco Road extension, it would probably give us a lot of input from people working at the airport and working in Lehigh and having programs like aeronautics and engine repairs and those type of things that are good-paying jobs that would be in that industrial area.
Correct.
Ms. Gittens says, Dr. Atkins said, yes, that property is under consideration. And I think if you remember, in the five-year capital improvement plan and budget for this year, the one thing that was identified to be done, while construction wasn't in the five-year plan, the purchase of the property was. So yes, absolutely, as we've been evaluating properties in the Lehigh area, it has not only been for the pre-K through 8 grades, it has been for a technical college program.
Well, I know that the community would be, you know, pretty much against it being K through 8 in that location.
Thank you.
Just saying. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, do you have?
That's all for.
Do you have, was there something responding to Dr. Atkins?
For Dr. Atkins, yes, a question. Well, thank you. I wanted to ask a real quick question regarding the graduation, and I really appreciate the fact that they're looking into that, and I'm sure they'll be putting some kind of caveat where if we do cancel those main venues, that we would get our deposit back on that, would be number one. And actually, having it at high schools, I remember when my kids were here, they had it. That was really beautiful, so I'm all for that, too. But I think we also, I don't know if the COVID pandemic team that we have, I guess, that looks at all that, are looking at also prom and, what else? Yeah, prom and grad bash and all of those, because I know that some schools are, from what my understanding is, they're already out there reserving spaces for their prom. So they're outside venues, but is it a district choice, or is it going to be a school-based choice on who's permitted to do that? How are we going to handle that?
And let me go back and make sure I'm accurate first with the property. So you're, the two are approval to pursue the purchase, so the Milwaukee Road and the other one off 82. And then the other ones are approval for the ratification agreement to purchase the Taylor Lane in Lehigh.
And is that, Taylor Lane is G. Weaver?
Yes.
Weaver, correct.
So all four of those that were on tomorrow's agenda, from my understanding.
So, so anyway, the first two are approval to pursue the purchase, and the other one is the actual purchase, as I understand it.
So then, in other words, it would come back to us again, and there's something that you would do.
Because they have to negotiate the price, correct?
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Yeah.
Sorry, I shouldn't have left yet.
Giving you your exercise.
I know, you guys are getting my steps. The, yes, so the approval to pursue means that there is still evaluation that we need to do in order to move it to the next step. So what, and that includes bringing it to advisory committees and continuing with capital committee and continuing with evaluation of the site and specifics of the site. So this is, this allows us to move to the next step in the process.
Because there's a lot of, there will be some mitigation on that based on there's no, you know, like electric and all that in that area, right?
So, exactly. All of those kind of considerations regarding the site, regarding the actual property, regarding the use of the property, all of that is brought to the committees. They give us input about that, and then we would, if we were to pursue the actual purchase, we bring it back to you. But this gives us the permission from the board to pursue the next steps of the property purchase. It does not necessarily mean that you will ultimately be approving any property purchases, it's just giving us the permission to continue in the steps.
Thank you.
And then to come back to the, to the other question, so we're going to do things, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to do things consistently, so we really would like to see all, you know, either all in or, you know, one way or the other. So it would not be a school-based decision, it would be something that we actually, when we make those decisions, I mean, they bring in their high school principals.
Yeah, and they've begun that process already. So the principal leads have met, they came up with the draft, now they've met as a principal group, and they're talking about prom, grad bash, all of those pieces, and it will be a unified decision. I mean, you asked about deposits as well, similar to last year, we were able to get a deposit backed. Normally, that's written into the contract about cancellation, and the amount of time you have to cancel based around certain circumstances, so certainly that's always taken into consideration. And we'll have some, Mr. Simmons, the principal, they'll have some communication soon, be able to share with you and out to our community as well. I know there's timeliness around this, which is why they already had begun that conversation, because it's the time of the year where families start making those plans. This is when kids start thinking about graduation, it's getting, you know, we're starting to creep up on, not quite yet senioritis, but a prelude to it. So I know it's on the mind of our seniors, and so we want to make sure everybody has that information.
Yeah, and the reason I was asking about that caveat is because being out in the community and doing what I do, I hear how people are canceling events and then they're not able to get their money back. So I just want to make sure that we do have that in there, that that would come back, because that would be quite a bit of money. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, did you have additional?
I believe that's it. I'm just getting clarification on the Riverdale property.
Okay.
But you've got the rest of the information. That's all for, I have for comments unless I need to clarify that.
It is 3:46 PM, and we have come to the end of our agenda for this briefing meeting, and so we will adjourn, and we will reconvene here at 6:00 for our board action meeting. We are adjourned.